For the Pledge of Allegiance. I will make note of the fact that we have met in executive session this evening in order to discuss some personnel issues. I will now open it for public participation on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not. Keep in mind that if there is an item on the agenda you'd like to speak to, you will also have an opportunity for comment on items that carry a vote. Do I see any public comment? Okay, moving to the consent agenda. Is there any public comment specific to an item on the consent agenda? Is there any commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yeah. That's fine. What is that? H.
Okay, we will... Are there any other items on consent to poll? Okay, for item H, it's Resolution 2023-22, approving the hiring/reimbursement incentive for police patrol officers at the successful completion of their one-year probationary period with the Radnor Township Police Department. Chief, would you like to speak to this, please?
Thank you, President. The Radnor Police Department is requesting the Board to pass this resolution where we are trying to incentivize new police recruits. This would only be for new hires for our list that lasts approximately between one to two years, depending if the Civil Service Board extends it. In a brief, we know that there is a national shortage of police officers around us. We have over eight departments hiring in the immediate area, and a quick reference of the police app, or it's called Police One, which is a job app for police jobs. There is over 50 in the state of Pennsylvania alone right this minute. We feel that this incentive, the $5,995 you see, has a very specific number to it. We took Community College Police Academy, which is the most inexpensive way to get your police certification in Act 120, which is the certifications for Radnor Police Officers and other municipal police officers in the Commonwealth carry. We took that number, which is a baseline number, that would help incentivize people to choose Radnor Township to be a place to spend their entire careers. So based on the national shortage, competition locally, and due to our size, we don't pay for people to go to the academy because it's over nine months, we believe this is a very specific way to reimburse a new person who just went through the academy. As we know, people in college often struggle to pay student loans, and also, this would be an incentive for officers who want to come to this excellent township and spend their career here for a long term. So we are requesting the Board consider this request.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Second. So moved.
And is there any public comment? Not seeing any. I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Thank you very much. Now, I will also ask for a motion for the consent agenda. And a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda except for item H, please say aye. Thank you. Too many papers up here. Okay, so moving on to the business agenda, the first item in business is the appointment of Andrew Baranato to the Board of Health for a four-year term. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any comment from commissioners?
I do have a comment.
I'm going to hold it off until the next one, which is the Parks and Rec.
So I will ask for a vote on the appointment of Andrew Baranato to the Board of Health. All in favor say aye. Thank you. So the second appointment tonight is of Clark Pyatt, MD, to the Parks and Recreation Board for a five-year term. May I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Commissioner Farhi?
Sure. Thank you. So I just have a question with that. I know that there are a lot of people that apply to these roles, and we did interview at least three, and we have interviewed people in the past. And I know, and I mean, I could say his name, he emailed me and I spoke with him today, someone who was more than well-qualified, and I'm not saying that Dr. Pyatt is not qualified. But you have someone that served for 20-plus years on a elected Radnor Board. You had someone who, as he was doing that, spent another six-plus on the Parks and Rec Board. So when it talks about, when we talk about institutional knowledge, and we talk about knowing, you know, what's going on, I think that we need to, we're looking to fill qualified people on this board. And to a certain extent, I get you want fresh blood, but I think that there is, there was one person that still had a lot of institutional knowledge, and the fact that, I don't know who is responsible for contacting these people and bringing them in for interviews. And I'm not talking about the secretarial duty, I'm talking about saying, who are we interviewing, who are we not? I mean, we've interviewed people that, for, I think it was zoning, who was not a good fit, and I think we all knew that right away, just by looking at the guy's resume. So if we're going to bring people in that are not a good fit, just to check those boxes, but you have someone that's extremely qualified, and we're not going to bring them in, I don't know what message that sends to the public, especially at the executive sessions. We always say, look, we're happy to, we're happy to have you serve. If this isn't it, we'll find another position, and I know that was on the letter that was sent. But at the same time, I think that we need to go ahead and try to fill the people that are the most qualified and have that institutional knowledge that don't need six months or a year or whatever to get caught up, because these meetings are once a month, someone that can just dive in there. So if you could comment on that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I will.
It's not a bash, but I am a little bit, you know...
So we have limited opportunities for volunteerism in the community at any certain time, but they do rotate. We have a steady stream of positions that we need to fill. I am of the mind that bringing in, you know, five, I think it would have been five or more candidates for one position, and turning down four residents, putting them through a competitive process, and turning down four residents for service, to me, was a bigger harm than cutting off the number of people who had already, you know, we had three people who had already put their interest in, it was for this seat in this moment of time, and bringing two more people so that we're going to say no to four. I felt that we had a candidate pool, people had, you know, stepped up when they did, and there are only so many positions at any given time. That being said, I appreciate people who have given great service to the community, but I am also going to put a little bit back on you that, for a different committee, you were very concerned about only bringing people and not having fresh blood at the table. So it was also an effort to broaden our expanse of people who are engaged with the community, rather than moving somebody who had served in one space to another space, or bringing them back to the candidate who you, I think, are thinking of, absolute wonderful public servant, but I was trying to broaden our pool of volunteers. And frankly, I don't think that we should have that level of competition for a volunteer position. So I felt three for one seat was about as expensive as I'd like to go.
Okay.
So if that was on me, I made the call. I hope that those who are not asked to interview for this very particular role will take a look at the list and see other positions they might be good for, or it would be a matter of time before we're looking for another spot.
Sure, just as a point of process, is it based on when you put your resume in? Is it based on the quality of the resume? Is it based, because the person that I'm thinking of, he put his resume in very early.
Right, but we...
And, you know, and he's interviewed before.
Well, I don't know about the timing, I don't receive the resumes. I receive a list of people...
As soon as a person stepped down, I called him and said, put your resume in, and that was done.
Okay, well, I hope he steps up again, but that's my explanation.
It's the second time that he's done it.
It's too many people for one position, I think, is cruel to our residents who are just trying to do something good for their community.
But one more, one last thing, but not getting a callback as well, I think also sends a message as well. But thank you.
So, may I hear a motion? I think I did. And a second?
Second.
I will, is there any public comment on this candidate? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Okay, none opposed. Thank you. We will move on to item 3C, which is a caucus final land development approval on St. Honoray, 14-lump subdivision at Eagle Road and Strafford Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. David Falcone here on behalf of the applicant for the St. Honoray Development located at Eagle and Strafford Avenue. I think you are all quite familiar with this project. We've been in front of the Board a number of times. We were last before this Board seeking preliminary approval, which we were granted, along with a number of conditions which have been satisfied, which would allow us to move to this point. We returned to the Planning Commission for a review for final approval and received a recommendation there as well. All of the waivers that we sought at preliminary remain. We are asking for no additional waivers, and all of the comments from staff, you know, either will comply or have been addressed. So the plan remains unchanged since the last time we were here. We've maintained our connection with the community and the surrounding neighbors. They came out to support at the Planning Commission, and we're hoping to move the project forward. So we're here to field any questions the Board might have, but there have been no changes at this point.
Do we have any questions, comments?
Well, we're not done yet.
I'm completely satisfied. Like you said, you've been here many times. We have had a ton of questions in the past, and I really do feel that you've done a great job satisfying.
Thanks, and we appreciate the Board's feedback. This Board, the Planning Commission, staff has been, has been great to this point, working with us and getting us to this point, and the neighbors have been terrific as well in voicing opinions and working with us on the project, so we're excited about it.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments, so you're out of here before seven.
I can make it to a science fair. This is excellent.
I want to go to the science fair. Thanks. It's a caucus. As is, yeah, as is item 3D, also caucus, preliminary final land development approval for Oak Hill Mixed Use Development at 1001 Eagle Road.
Commissioner, if I may just note to the Board, so this applicant is requesting preliminary final, so they would only be here before you once compared to what the usual process, preliminary then final approval. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. Thank you.
And Steve, while you're explaining that, can you tell us what that means to have preliminary final together, please?
Sure, so the usual process would be they come to you in caucus to explain the project, then they would come back and request preliminary approval. We would, they would clean items up from the review letters, they would then be back before you for caucus final, and then for final. So this applicant has been before Planning Commission and this Board, they, in my opinion, they are justified in seeking preliminary final at this point. Their plans are that far along. So tonight is caucus, the Board gets to ask questions, no decisions required, and then they would be back in front of you either the next meeting or the following meeting. Both applicants will be seeking approval, understanding that they don't have their sewer capacity yet, so they're going to get a conditional final approval if this Board so approves, and then once the sewer comes through, they move forward.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions before we get started?
Thank you. My name is Greg Lingo. I'm a Radnor resident. I've had an opportunity to meet most of you on-site to talk about this particular project. I'm really excited about this use for this property because it's something that we don't have in the township right now. We held 16 different public and neighbor meetings on-site over the last nearly two years, and that process has really developed, I think, a better plan that's in front of you now. We've essentially clustered the development to limit its impact on any of the, any of the surrounding neighbors. So we're really excited about it. Again, it's a use that we don't have in this township. As you grow old, there's not a lot of options to go to. I personally experienced this with my father, who was a Radnor resident, and when he kind of aged out of the apartment, he had nowhere to go. We went to the Wayne Center, and it was not a great experience. So with that, I'm going to have Rob Lambert speak on our behalf as our engineer.
Good evening. Rob Lambert, Site Engineering Concepts. We do have our landscape architect, our traffic engineer, and Mr. Burisman, counsel. If there are any specific questions, we're happy to answer any of them. I'm going to kind of, I know many of you have seen this before, but just for general public, I will show a brief description of what it is, and then I have the two review letters, which are really all will comply. There's a couple waivers that we've requested, and then one clarification about right-of-way that the Board would have to answer. So as Greg said, let me, off the top of the page, I'll orient you first, is St. Davis Golf Club. To the left is Valley Forge Military. To the right is Cabrini, and to the bottom of the page is Eagle Road. As Greg said, the community meetings really develop the plan. Our initial plan actually had the main building out closer to Eagle Road and had more residential style up at the top where you see the main development. Early on, meeting with neighbors, it was clear that people didn't really mind the use, they didn't mind the development. What they didn't want was a big building out by Eagle Road. So we actually redesigned the entire building, the entire property. We flipped the main development all the way up to the top, changed the style of units that would be proposed, and redeveloped the whole piece. One question that came as we went through the process was a question about emergency access. Originally, we only had one access off of Eagle Road. We were able to obtain an easement from Valley Forge Military. Lynch Road is a private, it's really an internal driveway on Valley Forge's campus, but it's wide enough for a road. We were actually able to maintain that existing link that's up to the top of the page closest to St. David's as an emergency access. So that's a secondary emergency access that we were able to achieve. As far as the buildings go, we have the main building, which will have all of your amenities, your common dining, fitness, all the common facilities there. We have independent living buildings flanking the main building. To the bottom of the page is a memory care, personal care building that would be separated, and then to the left or west are independent living buildings. There are five cottages that are to remain, looking at, you know, renovating those to make those independent living units. There is, bless you, a community member asked about the existing gatehouse that is out close to Eagle Road. Originally, that was shown to be eliminated. We are showing preserving that gatehouse, but that's going to come into a question about right-of-way. So under your ordinance, it says that a road that has insufficient right-of-way width, it's up to the Board if you'd like the full width. So Eagle Road is identified as needing an 80-foot wide full width, so that would be a 40-foot half-width right-of-way. We're proposing a 30-foot half-width right-of-way, and I'm going to go to an enlargement. It's a little bit hard to see out there, it's actually easier to see up there than it is on this screen. So the 30-foot half-width actually goes right out to where this carriage house is, and so we're providing additional right-of-way there, but it wasn't the full 40-foot half-width. If we did the 40-foot half-width, it would go either through the house, or we'd have to go around the house. I would note that Eagle Road is a PennDOT right-of-way, and so really, you know, the township's asking for it, but it's really a PennDOT right-of-way at the end of the day. I would note that on the other side of the street, there was a recent development, and I believe it was approved with a 25-foot half-width. So we're actually a little bit wider than what was accepted on the other side. So that was kind of a question that was coming to the Board as, you know, just in the review letters as a question. We are asking for three waivers. One was the preliminary final, and that was really, when we met early on with the township, we were encouraged to look at doing a preliminary final, and the purpose of that was to really engage the community, go back and forth, and have real designs. And that's what we've done over the last two years, is really gone back and forth, push forward the designs while engaging in conversation. The second waiver is to not provide a full survey within 500 feet of the property. Again, this is a pretty common waiver. We'll provide whatever information is deemed necessary, but we're asking for a waiver of that. The third waiver is a little bit unique to this site. This site is partially wooded. Some of the woodlands is actually degrading over time, you know, the trees are maturing out. What we have asked for is a waiver to provide a supplemental understory planting rather than the full-size plants. We reviewed this with the shade tree commission. The shade tree commission supports this waiver, as did the Planning Commission. But what this would be is providing more understory plants, whips, small trees, up in the upper left-hand corner, and it's really meant to be an understory to the existing mature canopy. So you have more trees coming up at a smaller caliper will be growing. As part of that, we would have to have deer protection fencing that we'd put around that so we can get the understory growing. So those are the three waivers, and the one clarification question that we did have. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions or direct to the right person.
I have a dumb question, but I'm going to ask it. So the name of the development is called Oak Hill, which is a very common, what I feel is a generic term. There's an Oak Hill in Narberth, there's an Oak Hill all over. My only concern is, and not that people would get confused with Narberth and Radnor, or Penn Valley, rather, but because it is so common and it is a place where, you know, at-risk people are, is there any kind of confusion, or is that meant to be? I don't want it to be offensive when I say generic, but, you know, just, or it may not even deserve a response, I'm just saying, you know, like whispering, you know, like I get it, I just don't know if that, I just feel like in every township and in every town, there's something called Oak Hill, and I just, when you're dealing with maybe like a life and death situation.
No, I appreciate that. We'll revisit.
Pardon?
We can revisit it.
No, I mean, just, just, I mean, you know, just for what it is, just dropped my mind, but I think it's a great, I will say, I think it's a great use of the land, and thank you for your time, John.
Are there any other questions from commissioners?
I just wanted to comment and say that I've been to the property. I think it looks amazing, and I agree that it's a great use of the land, and I just wanted to understand more about the underplantings and why that's the avenue. Is it because there's so much mature growth there?
So you have a lot of mature or overly mature trees that are, you know, I think, if my memory serves me correctly, I feel like we did the initial shade tree many, many months ago, but I think it was 102 dead dying or diseased trees on the site. So you have a lot of mature oak trees that are declining, and it's really in an effort to provide that understory, right, is to put, put new trees, allow them to grow up underneath, so when the old tree dies, you have a tree that's growing up underneath it.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the gatehouse. I presume the reason that it, I mean, because it's there now, that it's being renovated, that's why it would be concerned that it's in the setback, or, like, I'm not, I'm not sure.
So it wasn't a question of setback, it was a question of right-of-way. And so the right-of-way would be expanding for the road, and so the right-of-way would actually be within the structure. If we did the full amount that was requested under the code, part of the structure actually would be in the right-of-way.
But that's true now.
The right-of-way doesn't exist now. We'd be offering it for dedication.
I got it, okay. And what is the gatehouse going to be used for?
Exact use hasn't been determined. My guess is it's probably going to be a security, you know, office.
Thanks.
And I'm, a follow-up on the gatehouse. You're committed to keeping the gatehouse? It's, you know, it's part of the plan?
It's part of the plan. It's all the design.
Can you talk a little bit about the occupancy? So I know that there are different types of spaces for different levels of care. Can you give me numbers, space, how big some of these are, just to get an understanding of what the population would be?
Yep, so there's 175 independent living units. Some will be two-bedroom, some will be one-bedroom, a majority will be one-bedroom. There, let's see here, there's 180, right? So there's 100, there's five independent living units, which will be cottages, 175 that will be more apartment-style, right? It's all in the common building. It'll have parking within the building, it'll be enclosed walkways to the main, to the main building, kind of the hub. And then there are 80 beds in the personal care, memory care, so that's a higher level of care.
And so how many, how many staff people will be needed around the clock?
I'm going to cheat here. So we had 10 medical staff and 45 employees, and that would be on the, on a, the highest shift.
At one time, 45?
At one time, correct.
Total, okay.
One more quick question. So the roads going up there, are you going to rededicate that to the township, or are you going to own?
No, no, everything's private. It's...
So you'll plow it and trash?
Correct, correct. It's, everything is, we're not dedicating any roads, we're going to be redoing the road, it's just a private road on an institutional campus.
Other questions?
Yeah, this is Peter.
Oh, hi, Peter.
I actually have a question for the Board. In order for John to prepare the resolution for the next meeting, I'd just like direction on how the Board is thinking about the right-of-way. Do you want to just keep it at 60? I've dealt in situations like this where we've actually just do a jog around the building. So we would, we would have a third, 40 half-width up until we get to the gatehouse, we jog it down to 30 around the gatehouse, and then back out to 40, or would you like to have it 30 half-width the entire frontage?
That is a very good question. I'm going to start with asking you what you've, what you've put on the plans. Is it to be 30 the whole way, or is it a jog?
Currently, we're showing 30 the whole way.
Okay. Any opinion of the Board about widening it after the house?
Is that enough for emergency vehicles and...
So really, the right-of-way is, the question is, will PennDOT, because it's a PennDOT road, be widening it to require that right-of-way? Is really the question, or is there going to be some other, you know, facility, whether it's a walkway, sidewalk, trail? You know, there is, right now, again, it's 25 on one side, 30 on the other, so you have a 55-foot right-of-way, which is a pretty substantial right-of-way for Eagle Road, but I would defer to, you know, the township consultants and staff if they think that we would need more.
Could you put a sidewalk there, or not? Or not you, but I guess maybe the township or...
At some point, a sidewalk, a sidewalk on that side of the road would be a great feat, not necessarily on this property.
Yeah, it's across from the Fenimore.
And as you go further east, it gets steep, there's, there would be challenges to doing that.
As long as trucks and emergency vehicles can get by.
Yeah, my only question, what Steve thinks about this, sorry. Steve Norsini thinks about this.
Mr. Norsini, you want to...
Thank you, Commissioner. So Rob is correct in that this is a PennDOT, would be a PennDOT right-of-way. So right-of-way... So right-of-way, we look for, as he said, maybe road widening, or public works project sidewalk, storm sewer, something along those lines. So at this point, understanding everything we just talked about with the topography of the road and the horizontal layout, not saying that we would never do a project there, but if we were to do a project there, whatever room we need would be very specific to that project. So I, I think we'd be fine with the 30-foot, 30-foot half-right-of-way. We do that often, recommend that to the board for these developments. I understand what Peter's saying, doing the jog, I've seen that. I just don't know the need for that at this point. And if actually PennDOT would accept it. We've seen this in the past. PennDOT is not necessarily accepting all these right-of-ways. It gets labeled on a plan, and it just stays on the plan and never actually gets recorded. So I, I'd be fine recommending to the board to go with the 30-foot half-width.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioner O'Leary? Is that it? Can you just very succinctly tell me that you said three waivers? I know we're discussing them kind of back and forth, so if you can just kind of itemize those three.
One was a waiver preliminary, to do preliminary final.
Right.
The second one was features within 500 feet. I'm happy to give you code sections if you want, but they're in the letter. And the third one was to supplement forest-grade whips for some of the 2-1/2-inch caliber trees.
Last call for comments from commissioners. No? Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excited to see this project, thank you. Okay, moving to item 3E, which is ordinance 2023-32, introduction amending the code of the Township of Radnor, Chapter 270, Section 270-28, parking prohibited at all times, Wentworth Lane, West Side, from Summit Terrace to Drear Lane. I'm gonna start with asking for a motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you. And Chief, is this you?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna ask Sergeant Radico and Officer Pyrie from the Highway Patrol Unit to come up. I think sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. Before we start talking about the presentation, I'd like to acknowledge Commissioner Farhi for working with his constituents. There's been a concern over public safety and actually our municipal vehicles at a lower level getting through this area, traversing the parking, and they're gonna be displaying a picture of sort of what the challenge is. And basically, we're asking for parking to only be on one side of the street, thus to allow, most importantly, emergency vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances, police cars are actually fine, but those bigger vehicles to get through. Also, Mr. Foster and his Public Works trucks have a hard time navigating this area, and if you put a plow on it, it's sort of self-explanatory, it just doesn't fit. We actually have to use different vehicles, not to steal Ricky's thunder. But when we went out, we met with the constituents, Commissioner Farhi was on location, and by doing this, we'll allow for parking, there's still plenty of area for people to park, in our opinion, and it'll just make it safer. So that is our request on ordinance 2023-32.
Thanks, Chief. Sergeant, anything to add?
No, that pretty much explains it all. I think, I mean, you can see from the picture...
Can you step to the mic?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
No, nothing to add. I'm coming in this at the tail end. I know it's been going on a little while. We looked at the street, and, you know, it makes sense, and there's, I think there's still plenty of parking, which is always an issue.
That was gonna be my question. How many spots are we losing on that street? Well, how many cars park along the way that they are not going to be able to park there anymore?
Commissioner, just to give you an answer that may not be 100%, we know we're cutting the parking at 15%, 50% by only going to one side of the street. Do there not being lines, or there's different property margins? We didn't necessarily count, but we do realize with the support of the neighbors, Commissioner Farhi's approval, that this 50% reduction based on just saying one other side of the street, that we believe we will be fine. If we weren't fine, we would take a look at secondary parking, where we would try and use another site close to that area to make sure we accommodated people. But we kind of have to do this in our recommendation to you anyways, to allow the public safety to have easy traversing of the area.
Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Just a quick comment. So I would like, Chief, I would like to thank you, Bill, Commissioner Maroney as well, for coming to that neighbors' meeting. Also, staff traffic, I was at a couple of those meetings as well, so thank you to you guys, as well as to the neighbors for bringing up those concerns. It may be an inconvenience, but at the end of the day, we need to get our trash trucks down there. We don't want to take out any, any side, what do you call it? Yeah, side mirrors, like on Lowry's, when one almost hit you on the head, Bill, if you remember that. I still have a picture. But more importantly, we need our fire and our EMS and all of our police to get down there. So I'll apologize to the neighbors now, if there's an inconvenience, you may have to, you know, go up a little bit further up or down the street. Technically, it is two streets. One side is Wentworth, the other one is Summit. I'll just leave it at that, that's a whole other discussion. But again, thank you all for all the time that you took into listening to the neighbors, and I know that they greatly appreciate it, and I really, really appreciate that as well. So thank you.
Commissioner, I believe we picked the side of the street that has more parking, if that makes sense.
Well, the others, I guess the west side, I don't know if that's a west side, but the side closer toward Clemecrone, that one, there's like these odd, there's small little driveways and then side driveways, so that would be the most difficult, too. And that also affects the vis... I would think that if you park really close, that may affect the visibility, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 2023-17, authorizing the award of construction contract B-22007 for the Strathmore Road Storm Sewer Replacement Construction Project to AJ Jurek Incorporated to include contingency and construction inspection and administration in the total amount of $252,358 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Can you talk to us about this?
So this is a, an infrastructure project, a storm sewer project, as opposed to a stormwater management project. There is failed, failed infrastructure on Strathmore Road, and during heavy storms, due to that failure, ponding will occur across the whole road, and what happens is the road has to get closed. So this project is to replace pipe and inlets for this section to alleviate that issue that occurs. And that total of 252, 358 includes the bid price, contingency, and inspections. So we respectfully request the award of the project.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
Sure. Just a few, if I can go first. Steve, how, what was the size of the project to begin with?
So I'm sorry we didn't break it down, it's like 188,000.
So it's 188,000, and then there's an additional 252,000?
No, that 252 is all-in. That's with a 15% contingency, 10% for inspections. So that's, that's the all-in number.
That's the all-in, but what was it originally budgeted for? That was the original budget?
Yes. Actually, I think we budgeted higher, considerably higher for the project. That was on the spreadsheet that Mr. White presented some time ago. We were actually under that.
Other questions from commissioners? Anything from the public? Public comment on this issue? Oh, hi, Peter.
Whoopsie. There we go. Hey, Steve, what happened with the low bidder? What was the deficiencies there?
So, yeah, we did have a deficiency on this project. We actually had them on the last two. This bidder did not provide, we have a responsible contractor requirement, and one of the requirements is that the person who signs it is fully aware of all the requirements of the responsible contractor ordinance. And we do a very thorough vetting of our contracting, contractors bidding, and we did not feel that this contractor's response, or the person who signed it, put forth that they did actually know what the responsible contractor requirements were. So as always, and as Mr. Nelson notes, we always check with the solicitor before we do anything like this, and Mr. Rice agreed. So we informed the one, the one bidder, and we're talking a difference of about $2,000, $2,500 on this specific contract. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Sorry, Mr. Rice did not communicate that to me.
Okay, and I'm not seeing a public comment, so I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, it has passed. And moving to item G, which is Resolution 2023-18, authorizing the payment of change order number six to Campbell, Thomas &amp; Company for additional site characterization investigation in the amount of $58,835 to be funded from the proceeds of the 2019 general obligation bond. I'll start by asking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. I will open this up to you, Mr. Norsini.
Thank you, Commissioner. The board may recall when Bob Thomas presented for the Radnor Trail Extension, the options for crossing Radnor Chester Road. The board agreed that they wished to go under Radnor Chester Road via a culvert, right? Which is what we would do. To do that, we need to grade back several hundred feet on the existing Radnor Trail, right? So right now, it's filled, that all goes away. In doing so, we need to do what we did on the other side, which is environmental testing. So this change order is for, to bring in their subconsultant, who's going to do borings, provide all the test data results, and allow Campbell, Thomas to give us some ideas on, again, how we will deal with contaminated soil, should it be found. After this, the idea would be Campbell, Thomas would come back to the staff, and ultimately to this board, with a final proposal, understanding all the intricacies of the project from a contaminated soil standpoint, to design forbidding documents this trail extension. So this is one step away from that.
So I have a question about the types of contaminants that, is it testing for anything? Are we looking for something specific?
There's a, so from a soil standpoint, for the contractor, for she or he to work on this project, to be able to move or export soil, there's a list of contaminants that we're gonna have to check for. And the list, along with the limits, right? The limits of those contaminants are provided, and that's what our subconsultant would say to us, you're within the limits, you're not within the limits. So yes, there is, there are specific ones, Commissioner, based on DEP's requirements.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
So just to follow up with you, so those are more the contaminants that are associated with railroads, or trolleys, or whatnot, like arsenic and whatnot?
And yet, Commissioner, you bring up a good point. If you remember, on the east side, we did have those contaminants, right? And they were, they came to the board with a plan of how to work around them, and that would be the same thought here. I don't know what they would be, but there are definitely certain contaminants that are associated with railroads, especially one that's from, you know, 100-plus years ago.
Okay. And sorry, and I'm, just 'cause I don't have my agenda open, this is, where is this again? Is this, this is Radnor Chester Road?
So if you were to get on the Radnor Trail on Sugar Town Road and head east, all the way to where it stops at Radnor Chester Road, right? The extension takes place beyond that. To go under the road, we need to grade back a few hundred feet on the existing trail to go underneath it. That's what brings this up.
Okay, so that was when we had the debate, do we have a bridge? Do we have the wide trail, or the super-wide trail for the animals and the trucks, right?
Correct, sir.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 3H, Resolution 2023-19, approving the sewage facilities planning module 200 South Eithan Avenue. I'll start by asking for a motion.
So moved.
Thanks, and a second. And Mr. Norsini, this is you again?
Yes, ma'am. So Commissioner, you may recall that the Board of Commissioners approved the 200 South Eithan nine-lot subdivision a few months back, and that approval was conditional upon outside agency approval, specifically getting their sewage approval. This is the applicant's last step in applying to DEP for that approval. So it's rather a benign request on your part to approve the resolution. Staff has already reviewed the phone-book thick sewage facilities planning module, which the applicant will submit to DEP, and if all goes well, at one point, he will get his sewage approval, and that project can move on.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? And how about from the public? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Now we are moving on to presentation and discussion on building and infrastructure improvements. Who's coming up?
Mr. Tate is going to walk us through this presentation. On his way, though, I would like to just thank the department heads and those that have been involved in the work that has been done. This dates back, as the board knows, roughly six months, we started putting this together to include estimates with the 2023 budget. And so now what Bob will step through is the update on where we're at and what the next steps might look like. So just wanted to give a quick thank you to the department heads who have put a lot of time into trying to, into keeping this conversation moving forward.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, commissioners, for your time tonight. So the improvements we've been talking about over the past year, significant, much-needed, the administration building, which is 15 years old, the public works facility, just over 25 years old, and the Radnor Activity Center, which actually dates back about 80 years. So there are significant needs in that facility as well. When we look at these, we started with the scope of work, and I'll take you through one step at a time. Many thanks to Mr. Norsini for very comprehensive and detailed scope of work that's been developed for this year, Township Administration Building and the Public Works Facilities. Principally, what we're talking about in terms of needed improvements is the roofing, the HVAC, the lighting, facade and walkways, and the garage doors. And then separately, at the Radnor Activity, it's a separate scope of work developed by Tammy. Thank you, Tammy, for a very comprehensive and detailed list of improvements needed at that facility. Again, roofing, HVAC, the windows, plumbing and electric, significant interior finishes, as well as fire safety. The green checkmarks indicate the improvements that are needed. We will ask our professional firm, when the contract is awarded, to make recommendations that are in accordance with the plan adopted by the board, the Renewable Energy and Conservation Plan, back in March of 2021. And so we'll get into that a little further as well. Other improvements that are needed that do not require a feasibility study, these are not structural or mechanical, and this will run its own track, and you'll see this come before you sooner than the other two, that the Township-wide LED street lighting program, that's a project currently underway in conjunction with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. They are in step one of their feasibility study. Our Public Works parking lot resurfacing... Our Public Works parking lot resurfacing, that the intent there is to fold that in with the road resurfacing project for 2023, as well as some building security and police department range improvements that are needed. Again, these will, projects will be separately bid, and you'll see those proposals before you for consideration in the near future. So, I apologize for the misalignment here. So basically, we have three tracks that are progressing. The top says a township building in Public Works where feasibility study will be conducted. The results will be presented to the board upon completion and bidding, the bidding process will begin, leading to construction awarded, contract awarded construction. That is our longest timeline, for sure. The middle section are the nonstructural, those items not requiring any type of study. We will be going out for bids in the near future and anticipate coming to you for approval to award contracts and construction. Lastly, will be the Radnor Activity Center, which upon completion of the feasibility study, the results of that will come before the board for your consideration and further direction at that time. So just a handful of pictures. We have dozens and dozens of pictures. We can spend an hour looking at pictures, but in the interest of time, just a few noting some of the leaks coming through the roof here in this building, traveling down the walls, impacting the integrity of the walls and the wallpaper, and of course, and the carpeting. That is the most significant improvement that we're looking at here in our building. Over at the Public Works Facility, you may be able to hear it. If you can hear, you can see the drops of rain falling on Public Works garage floor where there's materials, supplies, equipment that are eventually impacted. The rain coming through has traveled through some of our electrical lighting facility and our exhaust systems. Not a stormwater management practice recommended by Steve Norsini. So this is in serious need of repair.
Can I just stop here? That should be done. I mean, if there's a leak in the roof, it needs to get done immediately. Why is that not done, at least to patch it? Has that been patched at least? Or is it because it's raining now, if we went to the Public Works garage now?
Commissioner, for the last 12 years that I've been here, we have, we have put Scotch tape and patches up on all of their buildings. At this point, we actually, we had a company come in last year and take a look at it, and it's, it's at a point where it's, it's in need of a total replacement.
No, no, yeah, I know that, but are you still, I mean, I'm not saying do what you do at Fenimore and throw a tarp over it, but maybe until, I mean, that's serious damage. Forget the whole, and I apologize for cutting off mold and all that, but you're, which is a health concern as far as I'm concerned, but you're also looking at metal, machinery, rust. So I'm just curious why, like, you can patch it, but you can keep patching it, maybe you need a bigger patch. But it just seems that I don't want to, you know, you try to save a little bit here by waiting six months or a year until you can get this done. In the meantime, you've destroyed some of your equipment because of rust or anything. I don't know if that's the right questioning.
Commissioner, our last contractor that was out there said he wouldn't come back and patch it anymore.
So from now to when we vote, to when we can strip the roof on this, then my question is how long are we looking at? And are there any health concerns? And I have more questions. I'll hold to the end, but I apologize. It's just very jarring to me.
Sure. We'll address them all. It is a major concern, and this is an element of the study that we've all talked about internally. And if that's one piece of the study that can be fast-tracked and expedited, we're exploring So just a quick recap. The scope of work developed by Steve and Tammy is ready to be incorporated into an RFP to be published hopefully this week. Something I want to note, there will be an energy audit conducted as part of these studies for all three of the buildings. So that satisfies one of the requests from our, from the EAC, as well as the initiatives. As I noted earlier, those green energy checked items are, will be considered by the firms recommending, when the firm makes their recommendations, so that those are in accordance with the Renewable Energy Conservation Plan. So that does involve solar power. So while we are looking at a new roof, we are, we will get a recommendation for a solar panel array on top of this building, as well as the Public Works building, which could help power high-efficiency HVAC, ultimately, electric vehicles and charging stations as we move in that direction, and as well as the LED lighting, not only here and in the building, but throughout the township. The goal of the plan is stated as 100% clean electricity by 2035, 100% clean energy by 2050. So we believe that these studies and recommendations, and as we move to make the needed improvements, will make a big step towards accomplishing the goals as outlined in the plan. So thanks for your time, and any questions, happy to answer.
I have just a, first of all, so pleased that we're looking at the clean energy focus in anything that we're doing with our properties. So thank you for prioritizing that. How old is this building, the township building?
This was opened in 2008, so I think construction between 2007, 2008.
And then, how old is the Public Works building?
26, going on 26 years.
Okay, those are my questions.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Just a couple of follow-up. So is it possible to fix the roof now and that, and then pay whatever that amount is through, through the bond? And you flip-flop that, Bill, is that legal or allowed or?
We will come before you with a reimbursement resolution.
Okay, so you can reimburse it?
That will reimburse, yes.
All right. And then the, and this is kind of vague, so I didn't really understand. When it comes with the rec center, Sepizio, what is that? If you go back, it said stop, so you're just going to do a, there's a big stop. So you're going to do a feasibility? There you go. What is that feasibility study going to maintain? Or what is it going to incorporate? Is it going to incorporate just the actual structure of the building, or will it also incorporate, and Tammy, you know this because I'm not surprising you, our relationship with the school board? And I don't know if it's going to be like a $5 million, $5 million to fix it, or $3 million or whatever, based on what the property value is. Because if it's $3 million, $5 million, you know, if it's some six, seven-digit number and we don't own that property, and three years later, we find there's another issue, it's like, you know, if we don't own it, we shouldn't be throwing large and large and large sums of money at something. That's, so, yeah.
Good point, and that is a larger discussion.
That's my biggest concern. Will that point be part of that feasibility?
Well, that's why the stop is there, because the feasibility study is, is a professional firm evaluating all the needed repairs that Tammy has outlined in great detail. And then that firm looking at the, analyzing the entire building, all of the needed structural, mechanical, all the improvements, and then making recommendations in accordance with our energy plan, as well as providing cost estimates to accomplish all of that. So we know we'll come back with a very comprehensive study with a very big number that, at that point, has to come back before the board to discuss, evaluate, and consider options on which direction to go. That's, the stop just means we're not stopping and we're not doing, we're not doing anything. It's that we're, we're not proceeding into the construction and bidding process until there's a thorough discussion with the board.
I have a question from Mr. Foster. I know that you take great care of our equipment and everything that's under your control. Can you talk a little bit about what you guys are doing with this leak in the roof that can't be patched? How are you working around that?
Yeah, this was a prior picture. So this leak was probably taken after we had a company come through. So it's not as severe as this anymore. But more of the leaks that we have now are a little slower. I mean, this was a steady pour that was happening, and we did have a company come out, and they basically patched all the holes that we had. But the unfortunate part is the patches don't hold because the membrane is starting to come apart. So even if they do patch it, it'll just come right back. And as you'll see from the study, we do have recommendations on a different type of roof to put up, because part of the problem is having the train tracks behind the building. So a lot of the branches and sticks, they fall from the train tracks and they puncture new holes in that membrane. So even if it does get patched, it's basically just swiss cheese now. So we're just kind of throwing bad money if we just keep patching it.
Thank you. And I'm assuming, because you know that building so well, you've lost some real estate because you're cordoning off sections that you can't store things in because they might get wet.
Yeah, most of the things that we have in those areas, as you can see, the one that's right there, it has plastic covering it. So if we do have anything that, you know, can get damaged, we'll try to move that stuff out of those areas.
Thank you. Anything else from the commissioners?
I'm just really excited and pleased that we passed a budget that could support this work. It's direly needed. I've seen both Sepizio firsthand and the Public Works Facility firsthand, and I'm really happy that we're able to proceed with this. I'm also happy about the clean energy programs that we're, you know, seeing through. And, you know, I was talking today, and we can go into this later, but about the township-wide LED plan, which is needed. And I'm wondering, with that plan, does that give off more light than what we have currently? I don't know if you would know the answer to that.
Once the first phase of the study is completed, we'll know more as to how much LED we can actually have throughout the township. Most of the township can be converted. I know there are some specialized lamp posts in certain areas that have some special design lighting that probably will not be able to be converted to LED. But the bulk of the lighting throughout the township will be incorporated into that. I don't know yet exactly the intensity or color variation, if that's available. We'll find out at the conclusion of the study and bring that back before the board. Thank you.
I have one. Great, okay. You mentioned sort of three secondary items, the LED lighting, the police department range that needs its whole ventilation system or needs to be redone, and a lot of paving of the lots at Public Works, et cetera. Are those going to sort of be assessed at the same time as these other things? I was sort of confused how they got put in a different bucket, if you will.
No, great question. These specific improvements will not require a full, comprehensive feasibility study. The LED street lighting is already in progress. Yes, that, these are all in a separate bucket, as well as the resurfacing as part of our road program this year. And the security and police department range here in this building, we already have, actually, we have proposals. So we're very close to coming back to you for awarding contracts to begin some of that work, and then a little later for the road resurfacing, and we'll keep you apprised of the LED lighting as that progresses.
Okay, so everybody had an opportunity to ask Mr. Tate questions. Excellent. Very exciting stuff. Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
So we are moving to another presentation, Public Works' proposed service day change presentation by Mr. Foster.
Before we actually begin with the presentation, I just want to let you know the direction that we're looking for. We're looking for your approval tonight, basically in favor of this service day change that we're going to make, or we would like to make. Just some, just to begin with the presentation, just the history behind yard waste when it comes to Radnor Township. 18 years ago, it was started, and this was to stay in compliance with the DEP, which didn't allow burning of yard waste throughout the township. So the township offered a service where they would go around to the residents and collect this yard waste. And that was started, the day that we picked was a Wednesday. What Public Works would like to do is actually propose a service day change to not only yard waste, but also trash collection. Now, here's some benefits to being able to do that. The residents would be able to have fewer scheduling changes because of the holidays. Most of our holidays are on Mondays. So what would happen, we would be able to not worry about sending out an email or notification to the resident saying that yard waste was canceled for the week, and now we have to adjust trash and recycling as follows. Also, the efficiency. A lot of our residents have weekend vacations that they plan, so they might not come back till late Monday or even later. And what would happen is they would then call Public Works and ask if we could pick up their trash. They forgot, they just got back from vacation late. So in that regard, it would make it more efficient even for, even for them. They could enjoy that weekend they have. Also, when it comes to the cleanups that the residents are able to take part of, just in talking with some of the residents, they actually prefer to be able to have these extra days through the weekend to get their yards cleaned up, to put the yard waste debris out. It makes it a little easier for them, because what happens now is they work through the weekend, get all their yard waste bundled up or bagged up. They have to take it back to their house, store it behind their house or in their garage just to bring it back down days later. So imagine if you cleaned up your yard over the weekend, you sit it out on Sunday, we're coming on Monday. This change also takes effect with our bulk trash. We do our bulk trash pickups and also our yard waste on the same day, that Wednesday. So if we were able to...
I'm sorry to interrupt. I apologize. Can you let me, what is the, I'm hearing the benefits of this. What is that change? Maybe I missed it?
It's coming. It's coming, yes, sir.
All right, all right, you're leaving.
It's just easier for me to know what it is.
No problem. It'll be on the slide coming up in just one second. So that bulk trash collection, a lot of times people have heavy items that they need to get out to the curb. So imagine you have to do that on a Tuesday night for a Wednesday. Now you have a whole weekend to basically get all those items together and then be able to move them. Commissioner, Friday, this is what you asked for. The service day change, it would be effective Monday, May 1st, if you are all in favor of it. And this is what our current schedule looks like. Currently, Monday, we do District One trash, Tuesday, District Two trash, Wednesday, we do the whole township recycling Thursday and Friday. There's no changes to that. Our proposed schedule, this is what we would like you to take into consideration and hopefully vote in favor of. We would like to have our yard waste in District One and District Two on Monday, and also our bulk pickup. Then Tuesday, District One trash, Wednesday, District Two trash. And again, we are not changing recycling at all. This is example of the township staff holiday schedules, the times that we're basically off. There's six holidays, if you notice in the red, which if we moved our collection to a Monday, yard waste, we would not have to change anything on the schedule. All we would have to notify the residents is that yard waste is suspended for the week. Right now, that is not what happens. It's a lot more communication, a lot of times, things get lost in the shuffle. Residents still put out yard waste and trash on those days. But if we were able to change it, there would only be one message that would have to be put out. There would be a couple of days that would still require a change, and that's Good Friday, April 7th, and also Independence Day, July 4th, which is a Tuesday. Those would be no yard waste collection on that week, and it would require trash and recycling to be moved around just because of the days that those holidays fall on. Here's another change that we had talked about in-house with the township manager. When it came to Thanksgiving week, what we wanted to do was right now, District One and District Two trash is collected, and then the third day, we would do recycling and just District One. So District Two got left in the lurch. There was no pickup for them. We'd like to actually change that and have yard waste picked up on that Monday, November 20th, those, those three days that the staff is here. It would actually coincide very well with our leaf collection program. A lot of times, there's a lot of leaves out right before Thanksgiving, so to have those cleaned up would actually bode very well. And then we would do District One trash and District Two trash, and there would be no recycling for either district. In summary, the change for this would definitely benefit the residents of Radnor Township. That is the motivation behind making this change. The other thing that... The other thing that we get a lot of calls for at Public Works is they've been asking for the yearly trash and recycling schedule. And we've been working on getting that. But we've also been working on this change to yard waste and the service day change for late 2022. So that's the reason why we couldn't give them that schedule that they asked for. But if we were able to make this change, we could have the calendar posted for January all the way through to the end of the year, if you were in favor of that. Now, even for Public Works, there is a benefit to us. So a lot of times, they also would like to have a longer weekend sometimes. So whether it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So even that, to deal with yard waste over the amount of trash that we have to pick up, just to have that extra day would also benefit just juggling around the staffing for that. And the best part that I enjoyed about this process was actually communicating with the neighboring townships. Some have switched their yard waste to Mondays, and they've had no issue with it. It's been a seamless transition. Other townships have actually changed their trash to different days. And that has also been a seamless transition. And this was all due to the communication efforts that they put out. And for that, I will turn over for the other half of this presentation to Molly Gallagher, who will talk about the communication efforts and how we're able to get that part done.
Thanks. Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm happy to work with Ricky to do a little Trash Talk 2023. So that's the name of our campaign that will support these collection day changes. So really, what is this campaign all about? Our primary goal is to use timely, informative, and accurate messaging to communicate the schedule changes with our residential community. And our primary objective is to reduce the number of concerns relating to the schedule changes by educating our community in advance, during, and after the schedule changes by leveraging our various communication platforms. A secondary objective is to spotlight Public Works staff members. We always love to build communications between our departments and our residents. And this is a great opportunity to strengthen that relationship. So the Trash Talk campaign will have a township-wide impact as scheduling, trash collection scheduling impacts every residential household here in town. And the most important part of this plan is a phased rollout of communication. So timing is really everything. A secondary goal that I'm personally excited about is an opportunity to educate our residents to protect the planet by practicing waste audits. So our EAC has done a wonderful job for years in communicating all things about the environment. But this would be another opportunity for Ricky and I to go on camera and give little tips and tricks of how we can each take responsibility for the environment. So an example would be to take a peek in your waste bin. And do you have a lot of raw foods? Or could you be a composting household? Or if you look in your recycling bin, you have a lot of single-use plastics. Is this an opportunity to use different forms of containers? So that's something we're both excited to talk about. Okay, so now we know the objectives. How are we going to get the information into our community? Of course, social media, that has been a wonderful tool for us. In this campaign, we'd love to leverage hashtags. So everything we post would have a hashtag Trash Talk 2023, or perhaps hashtag Collection Date Changes. All of this is still in the works, but we want to start trending in our community. Of course, the website is the number-one source of information here in town. We would highlight a coming soon section on most pages. So folks will know in advance of these impending changes. We will produce a digital flyer. And then as the change becomes closer in terms of timeline, say, the weekend before, all of the data on our website will be updated. So that's calendar changes. That's address lookup where there's detailed information about your district. So there's a lot of information that would need to be updated. And we would suggest doing that the weekend before to save confusion. Email blasts. Everything that's posted on the news feed is emailed into our community, assuming you have subscribed. So this is a good opportunity to increase subscriptions here in town. Video engagement. We've learned through Around Town Thursday that folks like to be spoken to. This is a great opportunity to feature the Public Works staff, and they can speak directly to our community on camera about the benefits of this change. And then, of course, Code Red. Code Red is our app for voice and text messaging. So same deal, it would be a phased rollout, the week before the change, the weekend before the change, and probably a week or two after the change, just to make sure no one is missed. We would release voice and text messaging into every household. Lastly, mass mailing. We're looking to get into the 10,000 Radnor households with a flyer. This is a sneak peek of the flyer. On page one, you'll see very, very obviously is the date change and what a week of trash and yard waste and recycling collection would look like in Radnor. And then tips on how to properly prepare your trash and yard waste to be compliant with Public Works guidelines. On page three, you will see a sneak peek of the districts. So this is D1 and D2 trash and recycling pickup. For folks very interested in maps, we will work with our GIS coordinator to go onto radnor.com, and you can zoom in and find your own house and see really what that means for your district. Holidays, a reminder of how trash will be impacted by holidays. And then recycling guidelines. Every opportunity we have, we'd like to remind folks that we are a single-stream recycling community. All right, so we have our messaging. We know what we're going to say, and we know how we're going to distribute it. How are we going to measure it? I thought this was a cool statistic. Ninety percent of millennials, 77% of Gen Xers, and 48% of Baby Boomers actively use social media, according to eMarketer.com. With over 10,000 households in Radnor, this audience includes a big bulk of our community. Right now, our social media activity looks like this. We have over 2,700 followers on Instagram, which is up 200 from the last time I spoke with you all in December. Our reach is over 90%. And that means you don't have to be a follower. It's just folks who have been exposed to our content. So we're very happy with our social media, though we're always going to continue to grow, especially on LinkedIn. That's a personal goal of mine to grow our relationship with the business community. Email messaging. So these are analytics showing you exactly how our website email messaging is performing. Right now, we have about 14,000 subscribers, which is up over 1,000 since the last time I spoke with you all in December. So we're not letting up on our goal to continually increase subscribers. We have an engagement rate of 64%, which is great. We want to stay over 50%. And I thought it would be interesting to share with you the most successful categories. Community news, parks and rec, township calendar, and news flash. So for our subscribers out there, if they have clicked three of these four, they will be hit with this information. This campaign falls into three of those four buckets. And then just a fun fact, over the last year, we have hit over a million email recipients and over 40,000 text recipients. So thank you for your time. This is your opportunity to ask us any questions, and we'd love further direction from you all in the campaign.
Thank you, Ricky and Molly, both. Great presentations, really appreciate it. I'm going to start out by saying I love the move to Mondays. I think it really just, it hits all of the needs of the community who care for their, you know, we live in a society where weekends are most people have off, and that's when they take care of business at their home. So I think this is a great step forward. When I first heard the rumblings of it, my anxiety was about how are people going to know and how off? And so you just nailed that, too. So thank you very much for that very thorough, thoughtful, not only communications plan, but real change management approach to this, understanding that our community, like, we've been doing it one way for a very long time. So getting people to know about it. But I think once that dust settles, most people will see the great value in it. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of it. I will open it up to others for questions and comments, but I wanted to say thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone?
Yeah, I have a quick. So I think it's a bold move. I'm all for it. I think you are going to get a lot of phone calls, is what you are. There are people that just don't like change. My only other comment is I think your flyer that's going out in the mail really needs to make the dates larger. Make that first page. Basically, that's all that it will, you know. There's too much stuff there. You need to just simplify that part of it, because that's really what you're trying. The rest of it's great, and people will read it, but you need to make that impact on the first page. That would just be a comment.
I have another suggestion. I've actually been suggesting this for years, and I don't know why Public Works or, instead of doing that, and the whole point is we're trying to be more environmentally friendly and not sending it out. Get that to Commissioner Myers. Make it bigger, put an adhesive on the back. And every year, come New Year's Day or whatever, put it on the thing. Put it on the bin, one for the recyclable, one for the trash. So you will never have a phone call. We will not have phone calls. They can go outside and look on their trash. We can put this in, we can't put this in. These are the dates. This isn't the date. And every year, you put it up. Yeah, the only problem is someone's going to say, I can't believe you put that on my trash can. Fine. Then you can scrub it off and keep a couple of these adhesive things by the township building as well. And I think that would make it easier for the residents, and you will take the level of communication probably from here all the way down to here. So I think that would be your best move is to, just, it's on there. Like, it's, there's no, there's no phone, there's no internet, there's no electricity. You just have to, every time you go outside and put a soda can away or a trash bag. So that would be my idea. I do like the idea of this, of doing it on Monday. That is obviously going to be the slowest day. You always will run into a hiccup with the holidays that change, like Christmas, or New Year's, or obviously Thanksgiving, which is on Thursday. But I think that once that's up there, like, you train them to look on that. A lot of this stuff and a lot of work can go away. So that is my only suggestion.
Thank you.
Elders?
I think this is such a good idea that I'm actively mad at you for not having had it before. And I'm just passing it on because my wife's going to be mad at me. Is there any appetite to turn yard waste into a click to get it the way bulk connection is? Bulk collection is? The reason why I ask is because I know that you guys end up doing kind of a hunt and find on yard waste days. Not everybody puts it out, not everybody has it.
Yeah, I mean, the way that we go through our yard waste collection now is we go through every street. So if they have it out, you know, it'll get picked up. Now, there's some that comes, they'll put it out late, or it, you know, error. You may drive past it and not see it. But for the most part, they're drive-by every street in the township, in District 1 and District 2, on that Wednesday.
Is there a meaningful time savings to be had if you just went to the people who had it? Like, if there's one person on every street, then you have to drive every street. I get it. But if there's one on every five streets, then maybe it takes a little less time.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting idea. I mean, we could visit how that is. We look at our heavy months, the way the weather's going now, March, April, and May. There's a lot that's out there. Then you have leaf season, you know, what's out there then? So imagine if we had an internet program where they just sent us 1,000 addresses. Then we would have to take all those addresses and divvy them up in-house. Where this way, it's kind of no-brainer. You just drive through every street and you pick it up. But we can definitely consider your idea and see how that would work, trying to get that, everyone to basically sign up and have to now let us know they put out yard waste. Not only actually do the work, but then they'd have to then communicate us, hey, I put something out, come and get it.
It's only my idea if it's successful. If it's a bad idea, there's no. He gave it to me first.
Well, we'll come to your house, you just give us your address whenever you put it out, and consider it done.
That's how I do it.
I actually, having been, you know, caught behind one of the trucks that was just driving to check in every house, you know, and there's also the fuel consumption and the manpower and all of those things. So although I'm not sure it was my idea, even if it is not successful, but we may have talked about it before. But I would like to, I mean, I would like to see if maybe there's a period of time to do a pilot on something like that, like, maybe in your slower season where it really is sort of a fruitless task to drive every street. Because there are other implications, rather than just the convenience of the residents. But also, how are we putting large trucks on the road and for how long? And how are we using our employees' time in the best way? So I kind of second that suggestion as something to contemplate, especially now that we have the GIS staff person who might come up with some wizard idea about how to map those quickly when they come in through the wheat to get ready for that pickup day. Anyway, throw it out there, technology is changing. The numbers you showed us about who engages in technology is always growing. Even our elders are, you know, more and more coming online and understanding how to book things, buy things, that sort of thing. So I like that idea. I did have just a quick question.
Sure.
How often does Public Works have, no, have to? How many calls do you do a special pickup because somebody either has been missed by our mistake or missed the timing and weren't able to get it out? Is that a large volume?
It's not really too bad. And we don't keep track on it because, you know, we're not going to, you know, hold the residents to task to making stuff that is out on time. So honestly, we don't keep track of that number. If someone calls, even today, we had a phone call with someone who put out yard waste. They had like 30 bags. And, you know, we knew it was supposed to rain, so we went and picked them up today. So we're definitely flexible. If we have time to do it, we always can, you know, branch off and get something done. So whether something comes late, or if it comes early, or it's too heavy, like, you know, we're not going to sit there and hold everyone to task. We try to be flexible.
But it's not onerous, where you're always getting called for special requests? It's a manageable number of calls?
No, the residents are very steadfast with working with us. So no, we don't have a lot of, you know, late calls or anything like that. No, not at all.
Good to hear. Thank you. Anyone else have questions, comments?
Just one last thing. Thank you again for the presentation. And I say before I say to my social media, you guys, Public Works, there's two policemen in here, so they can cover their ears. But the Public Works, you really got, you guys really are the unsung heroes of the community.
No, thank you.
You do all the stuff, you're behind the scenes, you don't take the credit. So thank you. And if this adds morale and, you know, makes the, you know, your crew happier and more content, and it's more efficient, I think you're not going to hear any complaints from us.
Thank you. I'll pass on the message. Thank you.
Thank you both.
So did you say yes, you're in favor?
You're asking for a sense of the board?
Would you please?
Okay. I'm going to just sort of look for head nods. If anybody's shaking their head, I will.
Yeah, just get my whole adhesive thing.
Yeah, you got six of us.
We do have ideas, so we'll consider all that, too. So thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, thanks for making sure we were clear on that, Mr. Foster. Thank you. Okay, really appreciate those last two presentations, which concludes our business agenda. I will now move to reports of board liaisons. I'm actually going to start this one because I do have something to report. The Environmental Advisory Council, as you know, worked really, really hard to present to us the plastic bag ban ordinance, which we did pass. It went into effect with a six-month grace period for residents to understand that it's going to be coming, and you should start saving those nice tote bags. And also for the businesses to either run through some stock they may have purchased, and also to, you know, prepare for how they are going to offer alternatives or not to their customers. The date for, I just asked for the exact date. March 15th is the implementation date where the, you know, it's no longer, we're not preparing for it, it will be implemented and in place. This is, I think there's some concern because not every store did as asked, which was to put up signage so that customers would see that it was coming. Some stores did, not all did. I think there was a really great public awareness campaign that Ms. Gallagher ran very nicely. But again, there's a little concern that not everybody's gotten the memo. So at this stage, I believe, I'll kick it over to Mr. White if I misstate here, keep me honest. But I believe this is, it's a typical compliance enforcement ordinance. So I know that there have been mailings that have gone out again as we're approaching that date so that we're sure that the businesses have heard about this on several different occasions, when it passed, and now as we're getting ready to get into enforcement. So bring your bags, you know, be patient with shop owners as they're figuring out how to do this. And you get surprised and don't have a bag, you know, just say thank you, stick it in your pocket. Or run back to your car and get your bags, like I have to do it every time I go to the grocery store. So I think I covered it. I will ask Mr. White to provide any further details if I missed.
No, absolutely. Commissioner, you did a fantastic job summarizing that. What I would like to add from the administration's point of view, the questions on enforcement. This is, as the ordinance dictates, it's something that our community development.
this is, as the ordinance dictates, it's something that our Community Development Department will be overseeing. For the time being, we have our Property Maintenance Inspector, who works part-time, but it's mostly, mostly part-time. He's been asked, over the next couple of weeks, to go around town and just identify shops, look for the signs, if they're not there, just be as friendly as possible to remind the store owner that the signs need to go up and that the enforcement date is coming. Then the week of the enforcement, so it's the week of the March 13th, the effective date's actually on Wednesday, the 15th. But we'll get out ahead of that, and again, visit as many stores as we can, reminding the store owners that this is gonna go into effect. And then, once it does go into effect, this will be a complaint-based enforcement program, so as we receive complaints, we will respond. And then periodically, you know, our Property Maintenance Inspector, as his title suggests, is also doing other things throughout town, but he will also be, you know, spot checking stores periodically. And that's, that's the extent that we're planning on enforcement at this point. If we find, after the enforcement date goes into effect, that we have a large number of non-compliance, that it's becoming, it's a, that it needs a larger discussion, we will gather that information, come back to the Board of Commissioners, and have a conversation then about how we want to adjust enforcement going forward. But that's the plan going into it, we're, you know, we're obviously going to enforce the ordinance, but at the same time, we're trying to be as business-friendly as possible and just help through this transition as best we can.
Thank you very much. Are there other reports from board committees?
This is always my favorite one, Tammy Cohen's here, this late. Tammy, can you do my job for me here, and say all the great things that you do for the community, and you've done, and what's coming up?
I can, sure. So there's a lot of things that are happening as we approach spring, although it did sound like there was quite a mix going on outside. I don't know if it was snow and rain, but I'm curious what's out there when we get out there. So there's a lot of great things coming up this spring. We have the Teen Flashlight Egg Hunt, that's gonna be on March 31st, so we have the registration open for that, and that's filling up quickly. It's an annual event that we do along the Radnor Trail. We also have registration opening this Wednesday on March 1st for the Youth Trout Derby, which takes place at Sawmill, so that's another one that fills up very quickly, usually in the day that it opens. So we'll be excited to have that again. Coming up, of course, and it's, I believe, 28th year, so it's been around for quite a long time. We'll have the Arbor Day Celebration coming up in late April, on April 28th, at Radnor Nature Park, we're excited about that, and a potential partnership in that event with Radnor Elementary that we're working on. Wheels of Wayne is gonna happen, it's the ninth year, coming up April 30th. And the registration's open for vehicles, and vendors, and businesses, and sponsors, so we have a lot of that happening. And then, also, just from Parks and Rec, we have a survey, a survey that's out right now for Odericio Park, we want to hear on improvements that residents want to see at the park. So that is on our project website for Odericio Park, and it's been out for a few weeks now. We have some residents that are circulating in the neighborhoods, trying to get that completed, and I know it has a high completion rate already, I think we're over 100 surveys that have been completed. So just eager to hear more about what people want to see there at that park as we're engaging planning. So a lot of great stuff coming up. We also, for Radnor Day Camp, we're hiring for seasonal staff employees, to be a camp counselor, and different types of leaders within the camp. So if you know anyone that's looking for a part-time job this summer, it's really great. We actually have about 50% of our staff that we just learned that's coming back from last year, which is always excellent, because that's a foundation of the camp of leadership. And then, with the new people coming in, helps facilitate just a great environment for growth and working with children. So if you know anyone that's interested, and of course, camp is open for registration for any of the parents and families that want to send their kids, so. And happening at Radnor Elementary again this year, so excited to keep working with Radnor School District on delivering that great program at their facilities. I can go on and on, but...
That's why I let you do it, Ian.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, from Sheed Tree, from last week on Wednesday, they talked about the spring planting, and they're gonna be planting trees at Philpont Park, and also Hartford Park. They're having a breakfast, lunch gathering there, including the installation, installing the trees, staking them, tying them, mulching them, tree diapers, deer protection, so the things, you know, last. They also discussed the tree maintenance pilot program, and also the North Wayne Tree Trench Stormwater Project.
Any other reports? So I will move on to new business. Does anybody have new business?
I do, I do. Maybe it's more old business, and this kind of relates to Parks and Rec, or Tammy, sort of, and Bill. So the willows, I believe they're supposed to report their biannually, am I correct, Bill, or Tammy? I don't know what the, I don't have the lease agreement.
Yeah, there's a requirement for two reports per year.
Okay. And when was the last time they reported?
I don't, I can't recall off the top of my head. I do know that they're slated to come in, I believe, next month.
Is that true, is that on, because I recall that it was every February, but I could be off on that, I just wanted to double-check while we're...
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I saw, I saw some emails going around. Dennis Capella's actually the staff administrative person that works on the contractual issues. I forget why, there was something with February that didn't make these nights work, so March was, one of the meetings in March, I'm about 95% sure that that's, that's true. Again, I'm doing this off memory right now.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not holding you to it, but at last, I thought it was February, and, so if it's March, then it would be April, and then we're kind of past there. But I'll check, I mean, if you have that or whatever, I would just be curious to see what that is. Appreciate that, that's it.
Any other new business, or old business?
Yeah, I have something that qualifies for old and new, and it's in regards to the streetlight that we talked about a little bit earlier. So I wanted to just remind people out there that we have an app on, we have the Radnor Connect app, and on that app, there's a button at the very bottom. So I really highly encourage everyone to download Radnor Connect, and if there's an issue with streetlights, if you see a light out blinking, you could just go to requests, and you can actually follow. In a queue, you could, you have the ability to see when that streetlight has been fixed. So I had a really nice letter sent to me by a young constituent, he's in ninth grade, and it was so informative, well-written, and I concur that, you know, streetlights can be an issue, especially in the third ward, it can get a little dark. So why I consider this old and new is because, you know, I would like to just, you know, start a conversation about maybe adding additional streetlights in the third ward. And Bill, we had a slight conversation about this earlier, and I wanted to know if you wanted to lay in on that.
Sure. First of all, I appreciate the promotion of the Radnor Connect app. It is helpful to, for the folks living there to be the eyes and ears of what's going on for these types of maintenance issues. So if there's a streetlight out, please let us know, and we can get our contractor on that to get it fixed. When it comes to the, you know, the conversation of expanding streetlights or adding them in a neighborhood, that elevates to a capital project level type of thing. In fact, there's, there's one other neighborhood in Radnor that's been requesting this type of conversation for the last couple of years, and we've, we've unfortunately held them off, because we haven't had capital funding. But what, it's just, it's a larger conversation, because, you know, while some folks want streetlights, I would imagine there's going to be some others who do not. So you want to have that larger, that larger neighborhood conversation. And then, ultimately, during those conversations, you figure out exactly where, how, and how much. And we can, you know, we can help administer that, you know, with, through GIS, and through our understanding of the streetlights, and, you know, how best to locate those, where the electricity is, where the underground utilities are, you know, those kind of nuances that don't immediately come to mind when you're thinking of it. And then ultimately, come back to the board with whatever that looks like, if it's five, if it's 50, you know, what that project might look like, and then it would require board support. So that's what, a larger conversation about adding streetlights to a neighborhood might look like. We would, we would want to follow the commissioner's lead on that, depending on which ward it's in, in terms of, you know, organizing the neighbors, and how best to make sure that we're meeting your expectations in making, in holding those meetings, and helping the communication along throughout the process. So that's, that's the larger one. There is an intermediary step. If it's one streetlight, we do have a process that Mr. Foster oversees through Public Works, where there's a petition that is gathered by that resident, the petition includes gathering signatures of neighbors, and it follows a very specific flow chart, ultimately to a point of, you know, the installation of a streetlight. So there's, there's Radnor Connect for, let's fix the, a broken light bulb, there's a process that would be initiated by contacting Mr. Foster on singular streetlight, and then there's the global capital project neighborhood look of, you know, getting in and doing a larger discussion about lighting in an entire neighborhood.
And then, what is your thought on, you know, during the feasibility study, are we able to take note through that study on whether or not LED will enhance lighting?
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, I'm not an expert in this field, other than what I've seen with my own eyes, and that is, the LED lights have the capability of being significantly, or adding additional light, it's cleaner light. I don't want to say that it's, it's more intrusive or broader, but it is definitely cleaner in that, in the area that it's illuminating, which will help in those areas. So I, through the feasibility study, we will find out, you know, if we're able to expand, you know, the footprint of the light, you know, what that, I forget the term for when it bleeds off into, you know, living rooms and bedroom windows that...
I think spillage.
Spillage, thank you, yes. The spillage impact, the color, and then ultimately, what, you know, what the company who's helping us out, what they would recommend in terms of frequency, based on all that information. And ultimately, it comes down to the folks living there, and the commissioners on, you know, how we want to react to that. But at a, at a very core level, what we're proposing is swapping out the streetlights with LED bulbs in their existing locations. So that, that is, that is something we're moving forward on immediately. And then through the course of that, we could get educated on all these other elements which might help us with these other, these other conversations.
Bill and Anna Marie, I'm happy to verse you in lighting, and lux, and loom, and all that other good stuff when it comes to those kind of lights. So if you want, just give me a call, because I've had to work with that, and I do have a couple of contacts you could reach out to.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Anyone else have newer or old business? I want those together. I will ask for a motion, oh, sorry, skipping public participation. Is anybody interested in making public comment? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn, and a second. All in favor? Thank you.